If my person asks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that idea.
What?
Yeah.
We're not leaving these more bears.
I don't know. I have to be careful.
You're one of the ones.
Yeah, I had two.
You're in a pickle. Yeah.
You have one. You was talking.
Carl, he doesn't want to score.
He's passing the car.
It's waxed.
Very great.
I gotta step out of there.
That's right, right. That's like. How should I do this? I'll call them once.
I want my. I think it was the nature of your view.
Sorry, yeah.
Let's do it. We're here for that.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands on the issue of the drive invisible liberty and justice for all.
The mayor is, uh, I'm interested in back to my side. Sitting in. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting is now over with. And on the road, see by the only standing policy of the ocean government. And in compliance with the Golden Globe meaning that. I wish to remind you that if you notice, we certainly still will be sent to the after your progress. Another of the indicators are down to 10, 2023. And issues and dates, signs, locations, we provide through those. This union is open to the vote. Go forth. Councilman Bucker.
You are here.
Councilman Bucker.
Here.
Councilman Farrowman.
Here.
Councilman Bucker. Mr. Butler. Councilman Martin.
Here.
As I said, there would be time to see what. Is that three months from today? Anyone on video?
Morning, morning.
Morning.
Good morning, morning. Uh, it's time to ask questions and make comments because that's hoping for discussion now.
I did. Remax.
Good. Okay, thank you. This is Daniel Heller from 31 Central Street. So a couple of concerns and questions. Uh, so I was going to order, um, I live at Beach Walk, the hotel in northern door. There's a construction site going on there. I'm just wondering if we are getting to what that is. I wasn't aware that there was something going along the north side of the Belt. That's number one. Number two, I'm wondering if we might not take on the Manhattan. Um, what's going on with the construction site there, the night store? And number three, the, uh, the new project is going by the water in downtown. This will be okay on that side. Um, and I thought about a year ago, a concern, and I know from one of you that me over the corner of 7-Eleven, Donovan's where the lights there, when you actually walk from 7-Eleven across the street to Donovan's. When you hit that corner of Donovan's, it's rotten. There's no sidewalk. It's just a danger. I wonder if anything could look into. Basically, when you're crossing from, uh, west to east over there, and a lot of people do on summer time, you have no sidewalk, so you basically, uh, causing some oncoming traffic coming from Donovan's. Leaving and people coming into Donovan's, Logan Avenue. So those are major problems.
Uh, construction, I think it happened last night. There was, uh, heavy roof construction going on. About the.
Seven forty eight.
Seven forty eight, was it? I'm trying to remember.
They're building a house.
I'm sorry?
They're building a house to.
Yes, but this was construction right.
Oh, last night to put a gas on.
You know, it was sad.
They're putting gas.
It was an ancient construction. We had, uh, three persons and, uh.
We were there. They took off, she was there last night.
Yeah, how did you know about this?
And you're saying the project the gentleman's speaking about is a single family home? It was a single family home just north of the beach walk. There weren't any gas pumps last night. Okay.
On your end, uh, Manhattan.
I can only tell you that the, uh, the, the hearing in front of the judge was postponed till October 6th or 8th. Uh, 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 but it's the first week in October. Um, the Manhattan continues, the, the owners continue to wait for the Economic Development Administration to grant them some relief. Um, and the EDA, uh, has not given them a thumbs up or a thumbs down at this point. Um, as you know, we went out for a request for proposals for a reuse of that building. Uh, once the mayor gets back, we're going to determine, uh, how we're going to move forward with the interviews on those four proposals. And we'll see where the two lines intersect between the court case and, uh, the, the abandoned property statute that we have been, uh, trying to enforce. Um, the, the third was the, the Dead Horse Project in downtown. Um, I know that they sought relief from CAFRA for some additional conditions. They're still in front of, uh, coastal area review. Um, and, uh, once they get that approval, we'll begin, and suspect it's going to be fall, uh, when they will start the demolition of the existing properties and the beginning of the bulkhead project. Um, and I'll ask Chief Freeman to speak to the ladies in the street. You, we, we. Yeah, last year, uh, last year DOT came out, they fixed the timing on the light. The intersection you're talking about, that was major construction. I walked out there with Councilman Keeler and Booker. And the sidewalk, you're talking, they didn't have to move telephone poles and power lines and everything. Fix, if I remember Jack, we walked out there. Yeah, so we got the line, the timing fixed on the light, uh, after the construction of a new sidewalk and we deal with the whole intersection that was. So you, so you have to walk from the, from the, uh, west side to the east side for a crossover center to that municipal. Yeah.
The timing definitely can push that.
Side of the sign.
You run the time.
Yeah.
If you don't push the button, you're going to be caught.
Right, but, 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 okay, but, but concerning, and I can picture you with this. So when you're walking from 7-Eleven over to the west, to the exit to the ocean, to Donovan's, when you get to that corner there, you have to actually go against conflict. Because people are coming from the parking lot of Donovan's and making the green light, so you're acting like, look at that. Like, if you see, and when you're kids, you're trying to beat something, there's a lot of interns there that, that play on that corner. I'm just wondering if the way, is there a replacement? Does Donovan own that property with rocks there that go right through sidewalk, way up to the entrance to the parking lot for Donovan's? Could there be a sidewalk over there that extends from west to east?
The only concern is that, right, there's a, there's a curve in that piece of land, and there's a big tree there. So the sidewalk, we continued was to get you back to the parking lot that we only didn't wash away. The same way right now is to cross over and walk by the recreation center.
Right, because the problem is when you're crossing over to the recreations that are from, you know, south to north, there was this oncoming traffic, you know, border, you can't, and you can't stand there because there's no room. And then you just sort of bow it in. But anyway, that, that's what you look into. Just a little concern, and that can bring up a little thing. Just a little question, downtown Seabright, is it, are you around parked cars on the sidewalk? In other words, if you have a, a drive-in, let's say, a parking area next to your house, that you will have to block the sidewalk with your car so people can walk on either side of the street on the sidewalk?
That's what I know. The chief says that.
No, okay, because I noticed that a lot of freaks, there is parking, where cars are blocking the sidewalk where you can't walk. Where you have to go into the street to get around the car.
You should call us if you see that problem. You should need to call the police if you see someone blocking the sidewalk with your car.
Yes, I actually, that's also, that's the response. Please call, take a sense of right down there. Because that does happen.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't happen in any case. You're walking down the park. You have to actually go down the park before you can get. But I think that's the advantage of our point of view.
Thank you for your comments. Any more, any more comments? Okay, we'll move on to the discussion items. Go for it.
Sure, I'll go through some of the cats on the road, who are in this up and underway, and we'll be. Except the, the, you know, the. And then we're, we're able to, uh, proceed with the, this year's project. Yeah, we've been, probably been about two, three weeks with the opposite. And you think it'll be done by the end of November? How pre-worked will be? I'm not sure about that yet. Okay. Um, we're going to talk about some of these other things. We're in the middle of the bulkhead analysis. Uh, Councilman B, we've been heading that up. Uh, we met with the, uh, state regarding any grant opportunities. So we have a follow-up meeting next week, um, regarding that. Uh, the, uh, we closed out the, the project, uh, punch list items for the municipal complex. That has been completed. Uh, now there's some remaining money, uh, in the, in, in the ordinance to do some of the things that were not done on the municipal complex, uh, i.e. the, the snow guards and, and things of that nature. Um, and I know last month, uh, Councilman Lavia and, and Keeler and others brought up a, a punch list to keep, keep us abreast of this, and I guess they, they were, John, you were waiting for any concerns, criticisms, uh?
Yeah, I, I shared with you, Jack, and you were consistent with these things need attention. But, you know, the list is too large, um, but we should pick off some of them. And Jack, you talked about several of the storm sewer issue. We've had flooding in the last two weeks. Um, these storms are not doing away. We should figure out how to solve them. So there's one, and the two.
Um, the, the pipe going to the river is now separated. Um, I sent that over to Senator O'Scan and asking for, you know, a little, a little push with the DOT. Greg responded to the resident. I saw his response. Uh, basically, the DOT on that particular one, I guess it's reluctant to do two things. One, extend the pipe into the river. Uh, they want to, they want to kind of end where it broke out. Uh, and that's caused a washout in their little beach area. Uh, but we proposed to go out into the river because that's what causes us to clog up all that sand when I'm incoming. Uh, it, it's, it happened three months ago or whatever. I mean, they finally came out. Um, and they were reluctant to, uh, put that, uh, second manhole in. They, they kind of aligned the, the proposal like one property line, so neither property owner was, uh, seriously impacted. So yesterday, or the day before, I forwarded to, to the senator and asked him if he could give us some help, uh, and a push. And I guess, Greg, you're the one in touch with the DOT. How we talk to them again? Seven, that picture, and if you would. Um, I know that Dave Marley had, had a commitment from, uh, DOT to come and do all of their catch bases on Ocean Avenue, uh, back them out and, and clean them. Um, I haven't seen.
I haven't really. Well, he said after Labor Day, so.
They did say after Labor Day, and he said by the end of October, they would have them done. So we're going to get those at least hopefully taken care of, the, the new supervisors who seems to be responsible with DOT. As it relates to ours, uh, we, we are still, we're done the backflow preventers in the downtown area. They seem to be working. Um, I think we're going to have a couple of high tides this weekend, and it's going to really, uh, push them, I think, with this storm and keep a lot of water in the river, so we'll see.
The, the ones that, you know, were concerned with, it was rainwater that couldn't find its way.
So then they're, they're blocked.
Joe, let me ask a question. So you mentioned before that we have a comprehensive approach of doing the downtown area. But in normal情况下, if we have a high tide and we have functioning checkouts and they're closed and you get heavy rain, the water's out of the way to go with that.
Correct.
So even, even if it's night clock, if you have a high tide and a heavy rain, you can have flooding that has to wait for the tide to allow for the checkout to open.
Yes, sir. And they've got, you're going to have a flooded shore.
A pump.
Right. And, and our pumps really don't operate against the tide either. They, they wait until the tide's down and the flow says it's time to push it out. It just gets rid of it faster. But it does not pump against the, the, the river.
This way, it's seven rains on, I don't know. It made the fucking school there, but then I waited about a half hour to get out. And the four locations in North Beach, uh, still there, blocking, I just wanted to run it. So I, I do the locations and check them. See, one of the north side, now I'm saying where they put the island grid. And the northbound lane is on basketball, and that's again a half hour after the rain stop.
But that's one thing in, in July and August where, you know, it's got to freeze, but once we get into the winter.
We can have an ice skating. If what Jack just described happened, there'd be more than one block.
Hmm? Absolutely. So we're hopeful the DOT will come in with their backdrop. If not, we have to hire one and, and clean them out. We typically do downtown areas, uh, you know, we always used to use prisoners. They're not as readily available anymore after COVID.
COVID, right?
COVID, they stopped. And now it's, uh, it's terrible.
Okay, need four addresses.
And Jack, I want to over a couple of other punch list items that I could address if you, if you have that.
Yeah, well, one was, and then working on the, uh, the office outside of, uh, our offices. Uh, you had, uh, sheet metal hanging on.
Yeah, sheet metal, and there's actually videotape of birds there.
We have a lot of birds. Yeah, that's for sure. We have, uh, we have some of the specialists who are going to do that. We've been waiting. What's this?
Uh, I don't know. It's the rental of the lift to get them up there or what do you do?
Because we've not committed to a, a, a mover to come in and fix that, and we've been waiting months.
Yeah.
For him. Um.
I'll reach out.
Yeah, but, I mean, let's get some other group.
I'll call a couple of other people and just get them in for.
Put them on the ladder. Fire truck left.
Chris will have the Navy area in her office, which we, yeah, we get charged for that.
That's our, uh, the, uh, we just don't. The other was, uh.
Yeah. We, we've, the other day, Wayne, uh, has, uh, paid all the outstanding bills from that building. We have some dollars left to do that.
And that's, uh?
We've been waiting on that. So we can do that. The, the problem is, is that the one roof, um, the roof in question that, that it fell off of is it, doesn't lend itself to putting those. The sides will work really fine and everything, but when we lost the glass out there, it came off of that other structure, uh, from what were the police storage areas. So we'll try to find a remedy for that. That broke the glass. I mean, the glass shouldn't have broke, I don't think. It smelled, but it did.
And the fun thing, uh, what else?
Yeah, actually, I just texted somebody in Faired even, there's 10,000 square feet of turf available for 500 bucks. That's massive. Um, I, you know, I gave you some pricing on what turf would be to have it ordered, delivered, and all that. Maybe we should, you know, I, I asked him if it's available and can we come take a look at it, so we'll see. But I, I think it's worth exploring.
And we'd have to do some prep work on that.
Yep.
Though, though, what we've seen anyway has to be some sort of horse or, or stone base there. Um, and we'd have to, uh, you know, we've said, let's try the, a couple of different items. We have, we're going to try turf. We have some pavers left over from the streetscape project. We were going to try to put, put them in one of them to see how that looks or reacts. But mulch doesn't work and rocks are vacant. The mulch just, when it floods, it's all over, and the rocks just are a maintenance nightmare. There, there's no easy way to do anything there with the rocks.
Well, on the one turf, you know, for all of our yokes, um, I have a, a good quote that she really worked with us to deliver the stuff to Cranberry, right? Which would make it cheap because some of it was more expensive to ship from where it comes from. Um, so it would be, I think it was about 800 bucks, and then you need the underlaying, right? Different sized stone, so. Um, I'll look into this one here and see if this guy, you know, if that turf is available, it's local. It's more than we need. If we could do all of the areas as opposed to just a sample or just have it available.
That's not the door of fairytale, and it's a car.
Uh, it's, it's one of their facilities. Looks like a football or.
Oh, yeah, they just redid all of it.
Something named or.
Was it the, the, the Borough Fair or the, 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 or, or, or administrative?
Oh, yeah, his name's Steven Lowry, and it is bug fishing turf, so. I'll go and take a look at it today and see. I mean, at 10,000 square feet, we need about 2,000 to do all. Um, I'm sure we can find, you know, 10,000 enough to, you know, cut it up. And I have all the dimensions and all that stuff, so.
It's like a hundred by hundred piece of, uh, turf.
Yep. It's, it looks like, uh, either a soccer field or.
They just redid all their sports fields.
And it's local. You can lift that, right, Rob?
Yep.
Problem.
Do you have any questions, Brad?
Um, actually, um, Rob Long contacted Sam and I about dollar waste. And what he said is his, his concern is in the winter, when we pull in the pails off the beach. There's no place to possibly wondering, could we somehow accommodate or leave? Is there a problem leaving the pails out there? Um, is it a problem for public works to grab the pails or even organize a volunteer committee?
Be our trash teams.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the ones at the, uh, at each of the access points, not the public access, right? But we have them at the village and all along. They come in in the winter. And so then there's no place to leave that stuff.
I guess our, it was just tide and things tend to, you know, during storms, they tend to go away. I mean, if we don't mind leaving them out, we, uh, I suspect we should leave them out.
We can leave them. Put the ones out.
Yeah, we, we make sure anywhere that comes to the beach doesn't. I don't know if the cans that are on those posts, are they really effective, do they?
Yeah.
We had those in our area. So maybe we would do some more of them at the other points. We'll connect with him and find out where he's looking for. Um, he said he's worked this up in the past. But, yeah, it is an issue, and, uh, we, we don't want it left on the beach.
Right, absolutely. But, uh, as, as Rob said, we could probably leave it at all the access points, like out towards the, where you're coming off the beach. Ones in the middle of the beach have to be.
We, we need a different idea, right?
I mean, they did.
Well, I'll get with him. I wanted to make sure on the record that you, he made the request and that we can talk about it. We'll come up with an idea and then we'll get with him.
Do you want to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're there. Keep, and then yours.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. All right, I'm going to start off a little fast with, um. Normal August stats, 688 calls for service. We had everything from disordered contacts to domestics, stolen cars, mental, emotional, suicidal, harassments, you name it, fights, everything was there in the month of August for our arrest. For our summonses, we had a total amount of summonses, 974. That's a lot of tickets.
That is a big old August.
That is a monster amount of summonses. Um, parking was 914 alone, six year we were moving. Paid a park, 617, permit, 150, 15 to 30 was 66 tickets business. Parking only 30, which was good. No parking on the side of the street was four of them, within the lines, one, total, 718. And municipal parking regulations was 65. That was a 20123. So that, I, I'm thinking, we probably hit a record all by the way. I just, the summer loan, we never had this amount. And a lot of it was our class ones who killed it, and having that toll officer to do other things just made a gigantic difference. So I, I'm not going to have the total numbers, um, or tickets for probably another month or two. They all got to keep coming in. I don't even have the numbers for the fights at the court because we saw a couple of big court dates coming up, which is going to assess the fight. So I know it's going to be more than last year. It's going to be more than last year.
She has two quick things. One, at the last meeting, I reported that the court collection was 76%.
Yeah.
That's the last year.
Yeah.
Any summonses in August for?
I think it was four for smoking again. Four, four. That's all we had. We had, it wasn't a big thing. We were not having complaints. We had out. Okay, some of each, you guys know, we had our side-by-side people out there every single day, every single weekend, especially on the weekends. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, no complaints from Don, so everything worked out. We did have our one normal person who complained about the smoke, and we'll talk about him at executive session. Yep. Anybody get any questions about that?
Well, I was, based on your numbers, the additional hire paid for itself.
A additional hire made a world of difference for us, just to free up that thing, and it just, it worked for us. And again, thank you again because we solved the difference right away.
So when you report your total numbers, can you just do the number with it? And we take salary out of that number, so we can get a lot of pure revenue instead.
Yeah, okay, we can do that. I won't give you a number until the end.
No, yeah, 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 yeah.
Hey, Chief, um.
Sorry.
That's okay. It'll come back. Other thing.
I don't know. I don't know where they're going.
They're going to the Seabright Service Center or Johnny's, and we probably would have had more total ways, but sometimes the pro truck just can't get the seat right. They're not coming out. They'll, they'll take an hour to get here, total, a car an hour to get back, so they're just, they just can't make it from any direction.
You know, you know if they were residents or any visitors?
Um, I don't know. Most likely, they were visitors. I don't think they were residents.
If we're having summonses, I'm not, people have no way of getting to where the, uh, you know, the.
That's happened sometimes, yeah. Well, that's, that's part of the, we have to find a way to get there.
Um, comments? One of the things we asked you to do with the additional, uh, the two police officers was greater enforcement. And it sounds like that was well accomplished, so thank you for that. The thing I was going to ask someone to do, but it also worked quite hard to do some of the paperwork to free up lots of.
I actually brought that up, Ron. So we didn't train them over the summertime. We were just too busy. We had our interviews over the past two weeks. We brought in a girl who we have, she's going to have the job. She met with Jill yesterday. Her name is Grace Nero. She is from Rumsen. She's 22 years old. She just graduated from Villanova with a criminal justice degree, and she'd like to learn at a local place by learning law enforcement. She's kind of in the, with the interviews. We like her. So, um, that's what I was kind of due today. We're going to start training her. So, um, that's what I was kinda doing today, we're gonna start training her, we'll put her off for Tuesday night to be appointed and get her going if you wanna meet her, but she's everything that we wanted, and she's smart. And just learning the computer system, the redaction, the videotapes, the discovery with the lawyers, everything, the records, evidence, you think she's gonna be a good fit.
Okay, so two quick things. One is part-time?
Part-time, yes. Three days a week, that was, that was it.
Okay, and the position requires certain credentials, so there's information to look at, and we will help her get those credentials.
Oh, absolutely. She actually went to a class with us at prosecutor's office yesterday for an Oprah class, she's a whole day on Oprah, Public Records Act, which she's pleased with. So we're gonna get her definitely rolling. She's what we like, and she just was a fit.
Okay, so it sounds to me, um, you made a request to the mayor and council to add two additional officers with the partnership of the government, and add part-time handling paperwork, creative officers with Grace's addition. You've finished how the change is yours?
We are in good shape.
Okay, good.
But Jeff did say we go for thirteen. Um, also, a couple of other things I wanted to bring up. Jimmy did the E by four minutes, I'll let him talk about it, we get some, and it's just, it's pretty basic, but it's there, it's everything we wanted, we got that, you have to look over it, it's important to, you have to assess fines and whatever, it's a big issue, it's a bit of all that kind of stuff, but we'll show you the whole thing. So Jim did the E by four minutes, I'll talk about it for a second. Um, up in North Beach, there are some new residents who decided to make the public streets of the Pickle Mall courts. The Pickle Mall courts coming down, so seventy-eight residents are happy to make our street into a Pickle Mall court, not literally try to, except this week, the Pickle Mall courts coming down.
Yeah.
They, it was kind of interesting.
You can give them payments with email, so there's their spots inside.
Yeah. Um, two weeks ago, John Arias signed up for a drone course through FEMA, which he got approved to go to, he was out there, is over for companies for a drone course. We are looking for a new drone, um, everybody in the captains actually use the drone, whether for the road department, for, everybody has taken pictures of all kinds, parking lots, the beaches, you name it, we use it. I think everyone else is using it more than the police, the fire. So I'm gonna look for a price for a new drone, hoping to possibly get the money through police budget, OEM, maybe a little bit of fire and lifeguards, maybe about ten, twelve, but I'll look at it first and see if everybody can handle it, because I know everybody, that's huge, Jack, well, it's the traffic.
Well, so unfortunately, uh, what's the question?
The price is about twelve, which is a little bit on the cheaper end, so I'm gonna toss it on, um, I'll talk to Ryan Murphy through OEM, if it's something that I can afford, if it's something you can, so everybody is, that's why I started.
Do they already have any things though?
Yeah, that's one problem, couldn't have better.
I just gave John an article on the use of those that I read in one of the publications about how they're using it on the beaches now.
Yeah.
Where they deploy a life preserver, and they're, they got there a lot faster than, you know, a life marking date. But you have to have, you have to have a pilot license to use it.
John has the FAA license, John got the FAA license, he's good for a couple of schools, so something I'll look into, and I'll give some numbers for you.
Use the chief.
Yeah.
I would, I would, you're asking sort of what the council thinks, my thought on that would be, I'm totally the city's individualist, to get the information.
Yeah.
To understand what it is, and what the price point is, and if it's applicable uses, and just kinda have something in front of us to look at if we pull the trigger.
Oh, hundred percent. I would not pull the trigger, I would definitely not even detect that you're open a whole presentation for it, but I just wanted to get out there, I mean, for some prices. It's not done yet, and we did have an OEM meeting last week, myself, calling this fire OEM, just for the upcoming hurricanes, hurricane season, to go over some stuff, so I think we'll be there, and just had a good session a couple of weeks, it's all running through with you guys.
Do you think we need like an open house on like hurricane prevention, like anything that can come for a farm, yes?
We have a part of our open house, you know?
Yeah, we do, right?
Usually Ryan, or the exact on that.
Yeah.
He had a bunch of literature to run the account, he brought the big little over, so he sets up a table with that.
Outside?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be a good thing to, like, the next launch, because there are a lot of people around, just to make sure they're aware.
Yeah, we still have a lot of literature, just might have some table, well.
Okay.
Um, paid parking ends on the fifteenth, we all know that, um, so we put the signs out on Excellent Two, car show Saturday morning, two hundred cars, I'll be blocking, blocking off, maybe Friday night, if we need that, and this is just a couple of things at executive session. Any questions? I should do that, right?
Morning, morning. By the numbers, um, month of August proper, eighty-nine calls per service, three months to a total of three hundred and fifty-five calls for the summer season. So I've set this in a bad point of reference, I'm not going to, where you did a hundred and fifty calls for the entire year, so things have changed, we see, right?
And we're going, we're going out of town a lot, and you've explained.
Did that, did that question come?
No, 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 you've explained to me the rationale, and I just wanted, the, I mean, so, in a way, part of the reason Chad has so many people here staying at night and being responsive is because they keep them busy, yes? There is a trade-off on that, you know, wear and tear on the machines, you know, the equipment and things of that nature, but, you know, it's, it's not a secret, but there's a, he has a valid reason that he likes to do that, so that these guys, the girls, stay here and, you know, they're not just sleeping here, you know, they're doing stuff, and that's what they wanna do. So there's that trade-off, they had this, you know, I won't say it.
Hundred percent. Actually, to the side track rule, Mr. Resnick had his day with the DCA yesterday, justifying the, was it DCA? Where should it be, DCA?
The Capitol.
Justifying Capitol, and they reached out subsequent to that, I guess part of his justification was to turn up here, what we needed, and, so they reached out yesterday afternoon to DCA proper about discussing water, talking to your programs, so some of that, so I had to guard the track next week, to be fair about that. Um, but one, one stat that we started tracking this year, which I was pretty, pretty cool, number was the amount of tours made, and, um, what we, what we logged was three hundred and fifty tours, that was from fifteen May through four September.
What does that mean?
People into the fires.
People into the fire.
Yeah, three hundred and fifty. I, I would think that that number's probably a little higher, because again, it was just a tally sheet, I have the tally sheet, if anyone says it.
Is it just?
Family.
Families.
Yeah. And I think it's just attributed by the location of the building. So, it's pretty cool, because we knew we did a lot, we just didn't know what that number was. So we started around, like I said, fifteen May, according to that number, and that was the number that came up.
Can you just, um, say again, who's, what is calling the truck?
The DCA.
DCA.
Yeah. So I had emailed Mike over the last night, I just got the five, so, so, see if we can fix that, so. Two points, uh, last Wednesday, we hosted an open and rolling flood awareness drill, taught by, uh, Rivera. Um, we had a hundred and twenty people from across the state here that attended, um, and it was just, it was basically flood rescue awareness, what to do when not to do. It seemed pretty successful, three hour class. Uh, like I said, we had people from across the state that had been here before, that was in the Bay of Nebraska. He's getting a lot of outreach now, where he's gonna start going to individual firehouses in the area to deliver that project.
There were classing plans.
Yep. And then at the end of the week, or, I'm sorry, at the end of the month, actually, technically October first, I think we're doing it, is we're doing the eight-hour flood drill here, with the, the highway, the trucks, the boats, that's, so.
Well, thank you for your services, but, um, actually, yesterday, he ended his, and then we did, and then.
Yeah, there.
And he just showed up, he got named at the hospital, and they prepared, but it was a fault, they were quick to get there, and, you know, they don't situation, thank you. You know, chief, to the point that Jim was talking about before, I think all of us, and I don't wanna speak for all of us, but we feel very fortunate to have the volunteer corps, you can have professionalism doing part of it on town. And you have explained to me and to all of us the balance between just responding to Seabright calls and responding to adjacent man calls. And I accept that. If we just did Seabright, it would be so selective, and you would have a hard time entertaining the level of proficiency, the volunteerism, the street corps, anything that comes with it. But that could be extended too far to.
Hundred percent, right.
So this past week, I just happened to see your guys in Long Branch and Bronson, and it went from a line of conversation that we had, and I guess the only thing I can say is we trust your judgment in making sure that you're maintaining a balance of just enough to keep your team versus too much, because now we're recovering expenses and other things associated with it. None of us is smart, I don't understand that the way you do, but we trust you to make sure that it doesn't extend too far, but enough to maintain what we're lucky to have. Thank you.
All right. So, thank you, very much appreciate your change and your fellow agents that are making your call.
Sure, it's called the more voices for votes.
I certainly have. You have a team of managers, even a part-time paid officer, you do, uh, well, well.
Yeah, we're gonna give a lift, for sure. Um, point of reference, so I wrote the number down before I came over here, so I figured it would come up. One May to September four, forty-six calls this year. I know what that's, that's firing hours, so that's the entire summer, forty-six calls.
Can you, um, did you like the survey, did you go back to the truck?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna go plug in all of this down.
So I like the, like, more, so you're on that.
I can, I'll form you right now if you work them.
Thank you. I'm very pleased you, you passed the month of the year, and I'm sure the revenue, let's see.
I'll see Charlie come up this year.
Um, one thing from me and SCK, I have now the Lucas, just in person, they're going to set up the training programs that they can officially put it in service, and that would be a major addition for, I think, you recall, the notice, the Lucas, and they use, has a personal, a heart problem, a breathing problem, and he's taken to the hospital. It's between, we both in the angles, for the chances of a full recovery, and, and instructors, and this and all of that. Uh, program, this is in January, services coming up.
Yeah, sadly, it's Rob to explain his graph, and he brought it up, but, uh, we imported ways with our contractor that we were using over the summer, and, um, I asked Dave and Rob to go back to the other bidders who bid during the course of, you know, when we were awarding it, uh, to get some quotes, for them to revise their quotes, because we couldn't re-award a bid. I was just trying to get us through the end of the year, so we could go out to bid in October or November, and then have a new contractor start in January. But the costs have escalated quite a bit. Um, I, I suspect that's why we had a low bidder, uh, in the first place. It was one person that was here seven days a week, and handled this building, the municipal building, uh, the, the old Borough Hall, and the bathrooms at Anchorage. It's a heavy lift for one person, uh, and that's why I think we weren't getting what we actually wanted to get out of the person. So, Rob, um, we knew this year going in, and Mike did, Mike Baskin did include additional proceeds, additional revenue in there, because we knew that, you know, for the first time, full-blown, everybody's up and running over, over this year, we were gonna, we were gonna have some additional cost. But, Rob, let me explain your graph.
Okay, Joe, just one question, what did the prior service to the council cost us?
That was forty.
Forty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's forty-six or forty-seven.
Forty-six thousand a year?
For, for everything.
Thank you.
What?
They also did through your contract, remember, it was thirty-two.
Okay, so that one's done.
Yeah, that one's done. Um, I have all the breakdowns and full specs, I printed them out, there's one copy, but I can email them to anybody who wants anything. There's certain companies that straight up told us they can't provide manpower for either the attendance downstairs or the Anchorage bathrooms, uh, so we, I threw them in there, if it's blank, it means that they didn't submit anything for that. I tried to make it as easy as possible, because you're going through those specs, so all the numbers are kind of everywhere. So, most of them were in per month or per week, because we told them it would be on a monthly basis until the end of the year, and then we would go back out to bid, and then we can talk about a yearly or multi-year kind of contract with them, but that would be on their submissions. Other than that, we met with them, took them all around, like I said, I had the breakdown of everything. Um, Eastern Janitorial, they were at Edgewater Beach Club right now, they have a crew down there. We reached out to them, and they said that they absolutely loved the people there. Short leading was somebody who just happened to stop by and asked if we needed janitorial services, and I said, sure, come on, we're going for a walk. So we took him around, we submitted everything, and then the other two companies came in, they walked around with myself, Dave, and Joe, and we kind of just took them through every billing, told them what we wanted, and then they submitted these prices to us. So then from here, we're gonna narrow it down to somebody that we think is gonna be the best fit, um, and then we're also talking about the attendance for next summer. So, attendance were a hot topic with all the cleaning companies, some said that they could do it, others said they don't have the manpower to provide for it, so we might have to talk to Don and through ourselves, and talk about hiring through either our department or through the beach, and open that.
Attendant is to take care of?
These bathrooms down, the public restroom is outside, so it would be a female and male attendant.
Yeah.
To pretty much stay around the bathroom, keep everything stocked and clean throughout the whole day.
Anchorage as well, or no?
What was that?
Anchorage, part of that deal?
Yes.
Would they do the Anchorage part of that?
Yeah. So it would be here, and then they would leave, go down there, clean up down there, so the bathrooms are a lot smaller, and a lot less traffic at those bathrooms, shouldn't take more than an hour to clean those, straighten them up, and then come back here for the busiest spot that we have.
So if you have two primary categories, it's buildings and beach bathrooms.
Pretty much.
And your goal is to have all of them covered by one kind of track. Is it right to say that we're looking at this, the only one that did everything was accessible?
Yes.
And others, in fact, said, I don't wanna do those other things?
There is one that said that they cannot provide, I, I have to look into the details in there, because I think it was the last one on this list that said that they can't provide them. Um, and then short leading group said that they could do it, and so did the other ones, they said that they can't provide for it, but it's gonna be a lot heavier cost.
Okay.
On us to add the attendance in.
Rob, who would make it out of the short list, this, you know, I'll calculate it, is, before we did the details, if I just look at access, the only one that fit everything, what are those numbers add up to on a monthly basis for what we need?
Uniform on, on, on the pricing, to have it still.
Yeah, that's, okay.
I can't, I can't even fathom.
It's, it's, it comes out to just below two hundred thousand dollars a year.
If I went across the access line and covers everything, it would be about two hundred, right?
I would say closer to one seventy-five in there, but that, that was what it came out to for five days a week, four hours a night, for these buildings, plus attendance, plus Anchorage, the cleaning of the bathrooms and all boroughs.
So not to belabor this, but that is the only one that quoted everything.
Correct.
And I would consider that the, the goal service, so to speak, and that's the only one that we can add up all the numbers and do an act.
Correct.
Your goal is to get others to be fully. Your goal is to get others to be fully compliant with everything we need and then you do the track.
I have emails out to them to at least just tell us what it's gonna be. Even if, you know, they either can't do it or what it is, just give us a number. That way we can provide better numbers for this. So this is a list of what I had available to me at the time.
Got it.
And Rob, on, on the bathrooms, it says five times a week for the attendance. We need on your seven days, don't we?
Yes, and access only bid for an hour and a half for the attendance per day. So that's not the worst of the worst. And even that was, yeah.
Well, this time of year, but...
This time of year is not bad.
Think on the list for it, so.
Would it be cheaper to hire some...
Well, that's what we talked about. We talked about, is if it's...
What's the price and what will be paid?
Correct. It'll be cheaper for us if we went through either our department, through Don, sit down with him, go through a hiring process and hire two people under us that we can talk to on a daily basis and get up there.
Is the service that we had cover all, all these things or were added in the work to the service?
No, they went, they went off the bid list that we put out the last time.
No, I mean, his question, prior to that, we don't have any ones. Did he basically do everything he wanted for $46,000 a year?
He dropped.
Okay, could keep up with it, but right at his best.
And that was a conversation that we had with the owner, original manager of the company, was to send help for this person because you could tell he was just over his head with everything and they didn't wanna send any additional help. And then there were obviously issues that we had and they had to be let go.
Yeah. So you got a lot more work to do here.
Yes, yes.
And the concept of hiring four-time people comes with a lot of tech, right?
It does. We had them before, if you recall, I don't know if you all recall, but when we had the trailers out here before this building was finished, we always had our own attendants, a male and a female attendant that were, that did that. We got away from that and went with the cleaning service because it was just too much for that. But you're right, it's, when you hire, especially people that you're gonna need seven days a week and you don't have a strong bench, I mean, it falls a lot on public workers then. You know, it'd be the backup. Call it sick, don't show up, whatever. It's, it's...
What was public works doing? The tenant, the tenant part at the end of the year?
Right now or...
They're doing it all right now.
Right now, they're doing everything.
To the best of their ability.
So you're gonna build out as much as you can.
Yes, as much information as I get in is gonna go into this and I don't wanna give it to them.
And then for our consideration, you'll play that against potential hiring and staff so we can work on that as long as it's a pair.
Yes.
And then do you think any overage right now, if we had an overage of like over our class of offers, would that come from, would each of you have a budget? Is that where the demand is coming from?
It'd be split. You'd have a split there. You know, someone used to control the attendance.
That's fully comfortable.
Don used to handle the two, the male and female attendants for the bathrooms.
Because all the complaints pretty much go to Don right now and then he reaches out to us and he come over, take care of whatever situation is going on in the bathroom, and then it's off to the next.
I, I, what do you think in this vein? You know, you're waiting for some things from some of the vendors, but for this point, what was lacking here is you don't have it yet. It's uniforming, in, in, speaking of in apples, apples comparison, total cost, what they're offering, et cetera. When do you think you might be able to?
I'm hoping by the end of next week to have all the information that I need. The companies have been very responsive to any questions that we've had after the fact after they've left. So as long as I, I'll send an email and I'll call everybody today and then have them email me everything else that they need. And then I'll update everything and I can send it out.
Do any of these companies work for the tenants?
Yes, they have a list. I think most of them submitted a list of references that we can talk to.
Cost of time, the Seabright property.
Yes.
Yeah, we just need a little more detail, so as they, as they said, Rob, that council said is for just consistency purposes.
Absolutely.
And, and we're gonna have to talk, I mean, it was always five days a week in the municipal building.
Yes. Because our, our cleaning spec is split up into, if you want option A is two days a week or three days a week and then option B is five days. So we had most of the companies just give us all and we'll go from there. But we're shooting for B, our option B, which was five days a week, five to nine P M. In the buildings over there, so it doesn't conflict with everybody working in the office.
Okay. Will they split that seasonal summertime?
Some of them have tried to split it seasonal, but it's, it's hard to say. Most of the building cleaning stays consistent through that and then the add-on of the attendance in the beach bathrooms since we winterize, Anchorage, there's not gonna be anything going on down there. You stay open all year round, so.
I just wanted to free as the equity, bring in four jobs. Are they gonna be included in the work or that's...
No, that's something completely separate and a lot of people who come here do not wanna go into the court parties, but if that's their only option, that's what's better.
Sort of be the anchor.
Correct.
So that would be your responsibility?
We have a company that comes in, they can clean everything, back everything out, that's...
Not this venue, it's a separate venue.
Yeah, that's a separate venue.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Just quickly on downtown sidewalk power washing. Over the past several years, we do it once in the, in the spring before the season and then we do it once in the fall. A lot of dialogue went back and forth this year. It's in the budget. But, you know, we talked a little bit about maybe changing our operation to increase maybe the application fee for sidewalk permits to, to, to the businesses, because that's where a lot of the dirt and grime is. We talked about that and then we said there's other places that don't get a sidewalk permit that are just as varied. And why should, those, you know, the sidewalk people pay for everyone, so for this year, it's in the budget. I think we need to decide whether we wanna continue doing that. We wanna place it on the property owners, the business owners to do their side. It's kind of difficult to really enforce that. And, and you have some, some businesses down there like, you know, our, our people don't have any, any people going in there with anything, coffee or, you know, ice cream or any of that, so how do we do it? We've been doing it ourselves. It's just in the cost of doing business. We continue to do that. We can't do it ourselves as well because we use a hot water system. The vendor uses a hot water system that tends to get the grease and other stuff off of the sidewalk, unlike our power washroom that would just be plugged into the, you know, the spec, the faucet. So it's, I'm dangerously aggressive with this word.
Did you see the thirty, two-hundred, thirty-five hundred, or whatever, for all sides?
Oh, they are here, good.
So you had a factory.
Joe, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah.
So the way to do it right now is we do it from beginning of the year to the end of the year. And it costs how much per time?
Very ten thousand.
Very ten thousand, okay. And you mentioned the fact that some of the businesses pay a license operating on the sidewalk.
Well, they really don't pay. They just come in for a sidewalk permit.
So there's no dollars attached to that?
Is there what?
We charge five hundred bucks.
Oh, and for receipts, that's true.
Okay, so is there a relationship in our mind between what is paid for that and what is used for the water cleaning? There's no, there's no relationship between those two?
No.
I, I can, I can imagine. One of our responsibilities is to try to maintain this town as beautiful as it can be, right? And $3,700 twice a year, that sounds like an extremely reasonable number to make. My question would be, should it be a bid summer for it? And not let go from the beginning of the year to the end of the year? And if what you're basically saying is the total cost to do it three times a year is about $10,000. We have so many people come to this town, children, animals, people that come to visit and they walk through those streets. We want more people to come for emergencies. I would say, keep doing it. And if there's actually a way to make it, if it's your opinion that the beginning of the year, the end of the year is sufficient and in-between looks fine, then I back off on a third time. But when I walk around town, I hear from Allison, I hear from a lot of the people, where this stuff is just all over the sidewalk and it's a problem, right? So my two cents on this, I would definitely continue doing it. And I would consider that if during the summer, it's a problem, a third time. Thank you.
So where do they start from to... I think it's centered to the bridge.
Yeah, to the...
Yeah, the sidewalk. What was in the, in the beautification program?
Can you send both sides of the street?
It is. We do both sides of the street.
I'm all for it, but it's still one. I know we sent their sweeper from town, but it left a lot of stuff on. And they eat water. We have plenty of water.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem, that they just make nice straight lines of the dirt.
Well, also the debris. We have so many rocks and stones in the roadway. And they, you know, should have been cleaned up in March before the season, but they're still there. As well, do you need to rearrange them?
Like the straight lines, yeah.
Yeah, can you, can you, you know, it sounds like, and I'm in support of a third time as well. We're not talking about a, about a big number and if it really makes a difference from public reception. But I think that we should, we should look at that. So I'm not sure what we need to do to...
Really sit down with public works and see what they, if we're funded, you know, to work them in mid-summer, you know, fourth of July, kind of, you know.
And this is an outsourced service.
It is.
And if we do it three times, I'm sure we'll do a volume discount, or maybe...
But I mean, yeah, the pressure numbers are falling since it's from Harley to the beach.
So I, I think that some of them will be in the CRP too, but I kind of see it, it's what it is, if you say yes for now.
Could we do a survey of the streets on the ocean side, side of the required street cleaning?
Well, that's true, that, that's true. We could probably get away with just two times a year on the, the east side. I mean, just pedestrian traffic there and most of the debris there is cigarettes and it's not ice cream and grease from the...
Pieses, yeah.
Yeah.
Focus on certain, specific area, maybe you go four times a year rather than just the whole. I just question...
It's a weekly cleaning. The good news is we'll get it done now and then we'll, we'll do a budget, budget presentation in the, in the early, the late winter or, or late spring and ensure we win it in that budget.
When, when we say now, do you think like September, October?
Yeah, yeah, it'll come right out. Yeah, they're not, they're not backed up.
And then, did you wanna mention what we talked about?
Yeah, exactly, dovetail nicely into this, right? So thinking is, we get so much, we're grateful for all of the business and traffic that we get in summertime and then come this time of the year, amazing, and everyone kind of has their sort of comeback. Thinking is timely accordingly, like if we were to do power washing on the sidewalks on, you know, one Wednesday in September and the following, we move back on coming weekend, we could have something like pink town clean where people come out and they start cleaning their sidewalks, because what we're also seeing, we talked about this last time in council, either when you asked about any updates for the Airbnb ordinance. We're starting to see a lot of the owners of the Airbnb's, they don't really take care of their property. They're not coming, they're not leaving. It's not their home, they're not treated in the same way. So after a whole season, you know, you're standing next to almost like a fence of who knows what sort of weeds you're staring at. So just thinking, you can kind of get everyone out, we galvanize, we can start cleaning, and then it just starts to create this kind of confusion sort of feeling around town, of look, just, it just comes back, comes back. I know it gets a little bit hammered and blocked on in summertime, in September, October, it's really gonna start to be nice until the hurricane's stayed away. But, you know, we'll have it for a couple of weeks. But it's just a nice, you know, community event, getting people together. I'm sure you should see what we become. We plant flowers in front of the building where we want, or we go, we can be the rec center out and working on the town together. It'd be a nice statement.
I think that's a great idea and I think year-round residents look forward to this September, October timeframe and bringing the town back to us as part of that message. I think that's a great idea.
And we could time it. If you wanted to time it with, you know, an open house for the firehouse. I don't know, when you, when you go open house, you grill in too or doing something? No, it's just on the...
Grilling?
Yeah.
You usually just like some burgers?
Right. Like you, just, I mean, just figuring out what you, if you get people doing one thing and they walk over or lose sleep at the beach, you could also align it with, you know, nap shows, ten twenty-one. Ten twenty-one, so there's a beach speed, sidewalk speed, you know, magazines being painted on the streets. So you could all just come together and then if you do everything at once, has this greater impact.
Move your target the week of, the stage, right?
I figured whether, whether you can go with...
So, and then you can also, I mean, if we do that on the weekend, then D P W would be up on Monday, there would be a lot of garbage beyond the resident sidewalks. So just wanting to make sure that everyone's in action, kind of, now, now you're gonna get a good hold of it. So if we wanted to leave a specific day or aim for that as a community to practice with?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I mean, it's based on the residents' desire to, you know, roll their sleeves and get some garbage bags out, but...
The, the communication with the residents is gonna be a big part of it. You can get it in everybody's hand or in everybody's mobile somehow. That's gonna be the key. The check service, I know that some towns have a posted assignment for check service.
What would you do then?
Yeah, with it, right.
That would watch, we'd just go on a date. I don't know, from a communication standpoint, if there's, we also wanna try and figure out, do we wanna plant anything? So maybe we just take a week and talk and then come back with a date.
You know, we had, Rob and I had talked about going around and seeing what needs to be pulled out, locked and read and what needs to be trimmed, yarmulke and... We haven't done it, but we could make that visit and then we can assess it and what do we need. And I do have a couple of long tiers that are willing to come, so as far as the trimming, we have a lot of stuff that could be removed before the fall because things start to grow again like that, right?
So we think it would be in October?
I think, I think sort of towards that sweet timeframe. Maybe talking mid-October for cleanup Seabright or... So give us some time, right, to organize it.
Yep.
Because I think the biggest thing is the communication. We still don't really have a vehicle that reaches all, even though Mitchell does a good job. And on that, I think we need to send something out about the street sweeper. It's not coming back, obviously. And if you have a need, you need to tell us, right? So I have one report from the North Beach where the construction sites are getting sloppy again.
Well, Tom will take care of that if you give me the addresses of that.
Yeah, I'll get that for you. But we should send something out just so people know because we did have a sweeper and I thought that was the return of it, but that was a separate sweeper.
That was a separate sweeper because the Highlands is still down.
He just got it working. He was in, he's coming back today, as long as everything still works. The other day it was like a test because they just got it back from the shop again.
Well, somehow we need to let you know.
For the mother of the pump, correct.
Because it involves parking and everything, you know?
Didn't even know he was coming until I saw him in New York.
So we do expect a return to normal with some of the street sweeper?
Hopefully.
Because the way you said it, town was done forever.
It's been gone for months.
No, man.
It's been gone for almost the whole summer.
They're gonna have to give us a credit. They, they were, you know, I knew Dean is talking to the superintendent there. You're gonna have to... They're gonna have to come up with something. Or next year.
Ten twenty-one.
Give us extra duty on the October cleanup.
That's all we want to do next time.
Okay, so quick update on this. You'll remember that Tom Hady expressed a concern, we didn't have anything in the town to address the fire pits. Obviously, we have a concern because of both proximity, we walk a lot of our buildings in town. We discussed it at prior meetings, both chiefs were involved in those conversations. We have not had a lot of complaints about this, but it's something that we collectively felt would be worthwhile, put in place, a lot of towns do in fact have ordinance, ordinance studies. So what Tom did, he reread a sample that he thought would be most representative from that city. He provided that to Rich. Rich went through it and provided an update, which I had here. I took a look at it and sort of real quickly to throw it around this, it's not so much that we have a major issue and we have to do a lot of enforcement, but right now, if there is a complaint, the police and fire department have nothing but pointy to it to say, this is the ordinance that covers fire pits. So we said we wanted to put something in place that covers that. So that's what the document does. I think it's pretty good. Basically, what it defines is what a fire pit is, what it isn't. It's separation from other structures to make sure it's not putting up buildings at risk. It talks about hours of utilization. It talks about certain hazards it could introduce and how to avoid them. And it talks about the enforcement, what can be done by the police or fire department. And first offense, second offense, third offense, potential fine, first offense, verbal, and then beyond that, it comes with some financial, potential penalties, so on and forth. I'm comfortable with this. There's one thing I would like to consider adding to it. Rich and I were talking about it, is the only complaints I've heard from people in town about this is excessive smoking. And the real question is, what's excessive and is that subjective and that you actually define? So putting that on the side, we can talk about that at a later time. Chris, I'd like to ask you if you could route this ordinance to the rest of the mayor and council, if you haven't already. Have them take a look at it and at a subsequent workshop, I'll just ask you to come back with any comments, suggestions, recommendations, rules. We don't want anything complicated, we want to make it straightforward, we want to make sure fire police are in a position that if something happens or there are complaints, it's applying, how those are addressed. So if there's no questions on that, that's all I wanted to cover. Would that entail gas, bros, or parties? I, I, yes. But it, it would define the, what's a grill, what's a fire pit. It doesn't go into a lot of detail reference, right? And I know there's a lot of different variations. I was thinking about, you know, in Costco, you can buy a table that's got a propane tank in it and it's got flames coming up from the wax. That's not what this is trying to talk about, right? It's a true fire pit where you're burning logs and things like that. But what I do want to do is make sure that we don't make this so prescriptive that it's hard to tell what's in and what's out. So what I would suggest is when we look at it, if you have any questions about that, just put your, your thoughts down. We'll integrate all of those, we'll come back with an updated proposal draft, Rich will take another look at it, we'll have Tom Hady take another look at it, and then we'll look at that. Okay?
Okay, one little pad that I'm finding.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody can use that.
Everybody should have a pad with that, if you would mind taking a look at.
I got smoke.
Yeah.
Especially, you get the wind patterns here. Starts out very nice, so in the day and the wind picks up and running windows and extra windows.
Yeah, I mean, one, we were talking before, one of the issues is our short-term rentals. A lot of them typically have fire pits and they advertise that as something that they have in their short-term rentals and attraction for people. And now you're talking about people who don't even own the house, right? They may be less concerned about its implication on neighbors. I'm here for three days, it should be seven, and I'll be gone tomorrow, and their view is different. So we gotta understand whether or not there's any implication on that from short-term rental structure. But I think this is a good framework. I'd ask everybody to take a look at it, provide comments, so we prepare for the live time, just block them. Thank you.
One, six, two, the goal, the intent on the town?
Um, yeah, I just, this is something that we talked about. And well, I was, I've been stopped a couple times by a couple of the merchants and who were complaining about, uh, in the Alice, you know, the, the, uh, spaghetti that is kind of back there, this, this part of wiring and that sort of thing. I just wanted to get an update from the administration as far as, you know, where our enforcement efforts are there and, and, and then again, this, this has been a discussion for several years, on and off, so I'm, I'm wondering kind of where we're at. I know we've got some, you know, maybe wiring and also this is, you know, garbage that's, you know, tucked back there and that sort of thing, and it's a, you know, it's a fire trap, you know, so.
Well, we're talking about just a couple, but you're, you're absolutely correct. Actually, I've been working on for years, trying to, trying to figure it out. We've, I've talked to some electrical people because I don't have the knowledge to, or nobody's really, you know, scared to have a mouthful and say, that's, that's ATD, that's, you know, JCP and L, although you know the whole, you don't necessarily know the vendor. The highest one's always electric. And I, I've talked to a couple of electrical contractors to see if they would be willing to come in and be our, our knowledge, and it's that one on an hourly basis. Haven't had much results. I told Jack, today we might want to talk to Greg, if there's an electrical engineer somewhere that could come in, knows the code, knows what's going on. Our, our right-of-way agreements all contain and provision that you, you're not supposed to abandon them in place, any wire. I guess our primary contractor for Seabright is Comcast. It's clear in their contract that if you lose a client, the wire's gotta come off. That doesn't happen. I mean, it just doesn't happen. And I don't know where FiOS is in their goal to be in here in Seabright, but they're another one, you know, they, you know, they abandoned, FiOS abandoned all their, their stuff in my town and they went with fiber. They didn't take anything down, they just added fiber. And I'm sure the contractor over there said the same thing, so. I don't know really, I, I think if I, we have a professional someone, we can come in and say, uh, FiOS, Comcast, JCP and L, and then we'll be able to give that information to, to, to our, our legal people. It's too, too close to a building. We have that in that one alley that you and I've looked at over the years. Looks like you could reach out a window and touch the electric there. And that really not supposed to happen, right?
Supposed to be so far off on topic. You know, you, you read on the internet that talks about, so you shouldn't attend to it, right? Because you don't know what you're touching. And we know the electrical, the, the highest one, and they're pretty good at keeping that going, but somebody's gonna be out of lights, right? But there's plenty of places, there's two in the North Beach where a loop is hanging down, you can almost reach up and grab whatever that smoking cable is. If I, when I read all through other towns, it says, you don't want people touching it, it should be reported the way you do streetlights to the police. Now, I don't know if that's the right way to do it, but certainly, you know, they're not gonna fix it, right? That's only a reporting mechanism. I, I have pictures of most of it, of where it's, you know, needs attention. We just need to go over it, give it to.
And maybe your contractor is the right guy?
But they're, they're so obvious. I mean, there's ones that are just wrapped around a pole and. I was in telecommunications for forty years. The only guys that remove cables is the thieves, you know, sell for scrap. Nobody pulls out those cables, it's a lot of labor intensive, right?
Yeah, they, they don't. They don't, well, maybe, maybe, you know, I think that this could be a way forward if you describe, you know, is to try to see if we can get someone that's in there or with someone who knows what they're looking at to potentially do an assessment for us and at least, you know, tell us what we're looking at so that we can deploy potentially legal resources to try to, you know, get that stuff cleaned up. Because the last thing you want to have, people talk about this pretty regularly, is there to be a spark, something happens and, and then everybody's looking at us, then why didn't you do something, why didn't you? We were talking about, but we haven't, we haven't been able to actually move it forward. So, yeah, with the council's, you know, permission, I, I, I think we should try to get an assessment on that.
Well, Jack and I talked about it yesterday and I said after the spoken break today, there may be something out there.
I'm good, I'm ready for that. All the questions on that. Because I know, he has no problem with the cops, Jason, getting all lines and everything down the low bed. If I identified a difference between different cables companies, it would be, well, at least we can identify as a cable company, which is a lot less, the reason why a lot of our lives.
Joe, let me, let me ask you a question. So, so I think we could figure out what's on the pole.
You can.
Jonathan, at the telecoms, I am.
I'm trying to come up here myself.
I, I actually.
And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we are the experts in something like this. My question is, what if, if we hire an electrical engineer, a certified, this, that and the other, pointing to that rat set and says, that's all Comcast gave. Have we ever tried getting somebody to come out and actually take something out? Because if we hire an engineer and we find out what everything is, it only becomes a removal, what do we achieve?
Well, I'm sorry, let me jump in. I mean, if the first step is, once we get an inventory assessment, this is a problem, this is responsible. First, look at the contracts. I mean, certainly Comcast, we've always had contracts that they're, you know, in the appendage to the code. And if they're violating this explicit contractual provision, which I know this ramp they are, but I know it's definitely in it, you know, we point out the contract provision, we can go after them.
We haven't done that, so it is?
No.
And are we prepared to?
I think so.
I just want to think about the follow-through before we decide what issue it is.
The, the problem we had is, when we called people out to look at it, Jack, if you remember, he said, that's not ours. That, that's, that's not ours.
It's hard to discern because if it's of copper, they all use the same kind of copper. Fiber is Verizon, so you, you know, that's a smaller cable. But there's all kinds of stuff out there and I don't know how you would determine who's at the end of the ramp.
That's what I mean, I can't determine.
No, in telecom, you put a butt set on it and you can bring it down and see, you know, where's it go. They're not gonna do that. I, I think we have a good concept of how to, even if we said, okay, these are twelve that need attention, who's gonna do that?
And I don't think, I'm thinking this is a one-day affair for somebody.
To come look at?
Well, in the major problem areas, downtown's a major problem.
Who identifies the major problem areas?
Well, where I get the complaints.
Well, I could do, walk the whole town and.
I mean, if there's, if there's a low one up north, I think that's an exception.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I think that's fine. If we say, we know that there's eight percent hot spots, so we want people to get a look at it. And we get an engineer, a certified engineer for one day to come look at that and say, my best assessment is that Comcast cable and that rest is, that there is to clean up. If that's what we're saying we have to do and what we get to position of following the legal route and say, your contract says that you're gonna clean everything up and our best guessing, get somebody down.
Yeah, here's a picture, here's a location. It's yours.
It, it may, or may not be successful, but no, it is, but I, what, what we have done thus far collectively is, is see, see an issue and wonder, I don't know what we're able to do about it, right? So we have to, we have to do something because it's our responsibility to do so. And it sounds like an inventory assessment followed up by appropriate, you know, legal communication is probably our, our best chance to get some of the design.
Sounds like you'd want somebody here for, personally, at my recognition, we may have somebody here for a week to prove it is successful. Let's go to the, let's have them here for a day, or let's go to the downtown area where we have most of our culprits and then see if it works. If it does, we can bring them in again and another.
In the past, they've said that it's not there. If, if all this about awareness, another way to approach it is to take it out and they'll come and fix it. But I, I think if we showed them the presentation and let the streetlights, you know, where it is, lock and lock, whatever, and gave it to each vendor and said, we believe this is you, and see their response. They, they do have a crew that that's all they do. I just don't know, it's like streetlights, it's probably. A million streetlights out in Crescent, Jersey right now. That's not, that's number one priority, right?
John, you say the MO, the telecom, this kind of stuff is deleted there.
Yep.
Period. How do we force it to rule?
It's not part of it, it's not being used.
Yeah, I mean, it should be a provision.
It is. It's always a threat.
It's only cable.
Yes.
Yeah, we, there was a list of rovers, right? They used to be the guy that we could talk to at Verizon, if it wasn't. But who are those principals that are you gonna call?
We have very. Well, I would like, my, from my point of view, I like to have like my luxury shop at that because I'm more concerned with safety issues, the power line, we're too low, as somebody mentioned, you reach out and go and grab these cables. If we have safety issues, that's one thing, but I can tell you, Jason, GM, definitely the highest line of product, at least with the problems from the line over here, because they don't leave a collective line out there.
Yeah.
But once we get them identified, it's easier to say to everybody else, you should only have one line or not.
But you see this stuff curled up, you know, just a hung, a hung on pole with the?
No, no, I would, there are a couple of locations where the wires, the electrical are too close to the building.
I see.
Jersey's center garage, that, so I agree, but no follow-up. That's why I think, Richard may have the, the man to work through the legal, because my insurance and John and the center, you get a lot of, yeah, okay, 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 and then it disappears and we try and chase them.
Well, then at one point, we could move that pole easily and then the second meeting came, we moved the pole.
Right. Is it fair to say we call them electrical cable and phone?
Yes.
That's everything we have, there was nothing else.
There might be some surveillance, wire cut there, additional identification, at least upon that, but I think, who would know those?
Yeah, I mean, there are cable contracts, that's what they do. I mean, one of the things that I have to say is that there's a code, it says how much say the wires have before it starts to degrade and that doesn't seem to bother anybody, right?
Of course, we thought it falls down the middle.
Well, they're swinging, thanks, and that's a big problem.
That's why I'm forcing the hand, immediately.
I'd be glad to reassemble the inventory of what we have seen already.
And that'll make it easier if we get someone.
And then to start from there is, okay, we have fifteen or whatever it is, and we believe they're missed, right? The long hang, gray ones are electrical, we think we all know where they are, but we should have something formal on that. And then the other ones are less of more than nuisance. But also, of course, that one that's hanging up in the North Beach, if a truck went by at high speed, you would take that wire with it.
Well, could we put a little package together, which pulls out from the contract, what they're accountable for, spotlight, all the areas?
Yeah.
See, you have the fire department put one from last year, one page together on the danger of it and then send it out to all the companies. So we don't care if our sources are going to lead to come and address, or to take legal action. I just.
Well, yes, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't even talk about that.
I think it's a good idea because even if we hire an electrical engineer, what if they say it's not a wire?
Yeah, they're services.
Yeah, but at least we have an expert saying it is your wire. I mean, that's not the point to, instead of getting, you know, and I don't, you know, it's fine to do that, we get the inventory, but sending out a blanket thing saying, here are all the problems.
No, including engineer.
Oh, including engineer. Yeah, okay, I thought that was good, okay.
Yes, say, or come, like, you can do it all apparently, or we can come, you know, just sit.
All right, so I'll, I'll put an inventory of what I know.
To give to the guy who come over to this, but I think.
We'll get together and figure out how to proceed from there with the inventory and how, what's the best approach. And then we'll look at how to contract it, if we're able to comply.
So, what's your drop in downtown here?
It was, but it's kind of a, a subject of conversation, where, when I talk about that, it's a thing, but, um, there, there, in the last, you know, few weeks, I've gotten several complaints from people, merchants in the downtown, people in downtown complaining about not just the volume, trash, it is what it is, but, but the placement of, and, and
but the placement of, and where they're putting it. Some, you know, we've got some, you know, a couple of spots in town that just generate a lot of work. It is, and it's hard to manage, I'm sure. But I don't know what options we have to, to, to help, whether enforcement on, on, whatever we have as far as warnings on, on digging the trash, and placement, et cetera, just so it's not, a lot of times it's out, you know, in the middle of the street, it's, you know, touching the sidewalk in some places, on the really busy, busy times. Now, heading into the fall, hopefully, we'll see some of that being diminished. But it's something that...
You mean, you mean just doing it ways?
Yeah, yeah.
Were you talking about overall garbage sales, or sales we put out by merchants?
Well, both have, have been brought up, and it's been more, my, my general feeling is, this is, this, what was in August is not going to be, going forward, it's because of the volume.
Yeah, I'm having a question on the same, is it more frequent pickup by D W of the garbage sales?
No, no, it's, it's more from, you know, what we should add here with merchants and restaurant waste.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's what I've been asked about all the time, so. And I realize it's a challenge, if it's a successful business, you're going to generate trash, that's just what it is. But I don't know if anyone else is hearing the same thing, but I, you know, folks have complained about the volume.
Pick our number, so the numbers that we work on?
Yeah, five thousand, seven hundred.
Well, that's part of it, but some of the, some of the merchants, some of the merchants get daily pickups.
They pay extra.
Yeah, so they pay extra.
They pay, they pay the vendors themselves. And I have one, one, one of our merchants, he pays extra for the, for the trash guys to go in the back and get it, bring it out and dump it, and then put it back. But there are a lot that, as Jeff said, that it's just half-hazard placement. Put it in a parking space, or, you know, wherever they think is suitable spot. It's just, you know, I'm not sure what our recourse is, and whether or not it's, it's a major issue, but it's, we're talking about, you know, trash, if, if, if it's there, everybody knows it's there, et cetera, but it's in certain spots, in certain volume, you know, and the heat, the smells, et cetera. So, it's just, you know, I guess it's a, it's a quality of life thing downtown folks have brought to my attention. I'm hoping, as we go into the fall, unless there's a mission, because the complaints are coming, you know, in the...
That would be a question of fixation.
No, no, it doesn't.
So, Joe, we put a system in place that merchants that had excessive garbage were responsible for pickup, and on any number of tails that we had acquired.
Correct.
First question, is that working?
I believe it is.
Okay. So, they're paying for it separately, which would result from a reduction in the amount of garbage that we were picking up, that's all we do. The problem here is, is the policing and appropriate placement and timing of garbage sales by merchants, that when they put it out at the wrong time, wrong place, offensive to people in that. Is that the issue we're talking about?
Yeah, that's, that's, that is a good synopsis of what has been said to me. And, you know, it's my personal feeling as well. I mean, there's, I, it's something you kind of overlook and kind of move past, because some, some folks have mentioned, if any of you guys knew about that. And I'm not sure what that is, but it was something that was wrong.
Well, we have a, we have a regulation on how early you can put out your garbage before the pickup.
Correct.
So, if you put it out too early, you can get fined for it. If you put it out too late, you're going to miss the pick-up. Have we had any fines? We want to see, I'd be very surprised if we did. I don't think we really, Joe, we don't really enforce that that much.
No, no, I'm glad we posed your question.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I guess, having, having somebody explain this problem to you, do you have a solution?
Well, not one that immediately came to mind, because I, one of those things where it's kind of difficult to kind of fix that, because, you know, it's, it's, you've got some things in place, I know about orders, and you know the timing, and stuff like that. You know, I don't know that we really have a, a strong solution. But the group that I made is that I would, I would surface it for discussion, and, and to see if there's anything that could be done to improve the situation. Maybe one of those things that that's typical to really... I think we have improved the situation by the limiting of the, the amount, and by enforcing that, and I think that's worked. The, the problem we did have were a couple of the businesses are closed on Monday, and, you know, they put their trash out, and nobody brings their trash cans in. So, that, I think we solved some of those problems. Early, I don't know what's too early, I mean, residents leave in the afternoon, you know, and they want to put it out, we were never really tough on that aspect of it. If it went out at the right day, and it was brought in on the right day, if it's out there at three o'clock instead of five o'clock, we didn't really, we didn't really enforce that.
I don't think, I mean, if you look at the three dimensions of this, one is, who pays? Do you think we'll fix that?
I do.
Two is the volume. I don't think we can control the amount of volume that a successful business puts out. I think the only other dimension you have is time. How long it is sitting in a place you don't want it to be. And if we have a restaurant that's putting it out way too early, and that's where people walking by have to see it for way too long, we have ordinances that can be enforced on that. And maybe we don't right now, but I don't think we can say, "Mr. Successful Business, putting out twelve cans would be limited to six."
Well, the businesses, I mean, I must, I want to get a question.
I, I talked to the one business I'm speaking of, and he immediately said, "Fine. If, if I can pay him a few extra bucks to come in the back and take it and bring it out," he didn't have a problem with it.
I would say, first, that is top, you know, the first.
We, we, I know, early on, Dave was checking one course, I don't even know that it got any, maybe, but, but Dave might know when to, a couple... Dave went to a couple of businesses, they complied right away. I don't know if he went back. I mean, he's not, he's on vacation now, or was he on that when he gets back?
I mean, I think it's also just an overwhelming feeling of, this town's dirty, right, in the summer. And we all know, so many components going into that. I would also think, with the summer being ended, we sit down, have a small word of, and say, "Maybe you are a classic, right, like, what do we need?" Because I think the volume of the beach traffic is only going to maintain, right, I hope, going into next year, so...
What you see is what you got.
Right, so maybe we need more, like, where do we need to augment? We need a second round of garbage, like, what do we do to keep this town clean? Where people are saying, "Wow, this place is filthy." Like, that's something, it's businesses can happen, it's, if it's warrant operating the right way, just show people who don't really have a care for our town, and then potentially fix it by bringing, you know, colors. What, what is the problem? And what are the other solutions?
Yeah, and again, this is a, a couple of folks have, and maybe just that particular day is in August, I mean, the hottest, so it, it was probably at its worst at that point, and it was, you know, a bad day, or whatever, and it decided to say something. That doesn't mean it's just round swell of irritation or anything, but it just happened to be, you know.
No, I'm, I'm cheering.
So, I'll ask the public works and, and code to keep an eye on it over the next month. Let's reemphasize, take a new look at it. We thought we stopped it, but maybe it's, you know, creep comes back.
We solved it more.
Yes.
There was a, we worked with a, they stacked stuff in the alleyway.
Well, the alleyway is...
And so, you don't see it, I'm sorry, though, and we went back, and I used sack. They break down the cardboard, they stack some cardboard, cooking oils in the alleyway back there. I think we have a question on, others are saying, "Maybe that could be more frequent pickup." You know, I said, "You can not put this stuff out on the sidewalk, you can't stack it in the back," kind of like, side of the alleyway, it's just too much stuff. You know, they're so busy, twenty-four hours, they end up like...
Oh, no, that's true, I mean, right after the pickup, they're starting to fill up again. I mean, successful, that's what it is. And I did, you know, I mean, it's one of those things that becomes, you know, it's a challenge. And even that, it is, okay, so what do we do about it? What we can, not everything's going to be easy, and it's not, you know, fixed, but, but we want to be responsive to our residents, and even when the answer isn't really clear, what, you know, what, what we can, can offer is a quick fix, or even, you know, a super solid fix. Folks will hear, you know, yeah.
But you're asking time, right, to go through and figure out how this summer goes, what were some of the problems, and you plan for it going into next year. But next year is kind of like, you know, the fireman's air comes around in the beginning of May, like, we know there's going to be a ton of trash, you know, the next day. And so, it starts to call in early hours, weekend hours, and maybe people will be here to clean it up. Like, I think we need to think about how to season one, and what do we need to prepare for action? What do we need more of?
And we'll refocus for the next month on evaluating if it was just a one-off kind of thing. He did the summer thing, but I'll, I'll put it on the next workshop.
Okay.
Thank you, I was, you know, the events?
All right, so I'm going to just go through a bunch of things that we have going on. So, coming up this weekend, on Sunday, is the Historic Society Celebration. So, three to six is the members, sponsors, and, you know, the borough, Federation of Government, institutions come for it, and take a look at that. We have press coming on both seventeenth and the twenty-fourth. So, we'll see, we've got some coverage on that coming out. But, so, the members, who's on the seventeenth, and the following, and on the twenty-fourth, is open to the public. And then they'll have that on, they'll like hold it in hours, and maybe three months, a week, a week's out. And so, they'll look forward on that. So, that's coming through. So, Chris Cox, Mark Blackstein, we're here to talk there, so...
Where are you?
No, surprised not.
Oh, you found it?
No, it was a...
We, uh...
Something was delivered yesterday, I mean, Chris is totally happy, so thank you.
That's what the public works did, it, it was the plaque that was on the school before it was demolished, and when it was dedicated, but it was, it was a slate engraved plaque, and it was about an inch, it was over four hundred pounds, I think. And we're just, we were...
Somebody donated it, but...
We, we took it ourselves, and we figured out what, and we didn't have it, but...
Oh, I thought Chris was going to...
He helped us out, we got it all planned together.
Because I thought it would be a million pieces.
So, it's coming together, so go for a monster, go in and take a look. And I think they're going to be planning something around Christmas time to melt, probably get some of our brands going through there, so nice additions to the town. A lot of... Then, we have the Rack Center, the ribbon cutting, kind of the cleaning house of the Rack Center. We push that back, we're looking for, it's the ten fourteen. I'm wondering if we have some homes, like, if it was like W. So, there are three lights in what I call the gamers area, whoever want to call that. There are three lights out up there in the gym, there are like two pallets, is that what I'm saying? I don't know how we do it.
Ceiling pallets?
Yeah.
They're like...
They should have a song, maybe. That was it.
Okay.
The, the lights, or the problem with the lights, to ignite the light? There's an arc that has to happen, and when they're not used regularly, that gets bad. So, if you flick the light a bunch of times, because we've changed the balance...
Okay, so it's like the weapon down?
Yeah, it generates that spark.
It gives you that.
And it gets corrosion on it. I definitely, you know, worked with Sean on that, and I did see two of them out when seniors came last week, but I got them to come on, right? But even the one in the back is rusted, right? It's, I think the condensation from the air conditioning against the wood, and it's rusted. I know Joey painted it last year.
Yeah, so maybe we can do a walk-throughs and hoping to get support. So, we're giving four, ten, fourteen, which is like four weeks away. We want to paint that room with gamers, like, like some kind of, but right now, it's got wallpaper, right, so, so we want to get some paint or that, so...
Take the wallpaper?
Take the wallpaper, just everything.
Well, that isn't done, I mean, I scraped the cables the other day, because it was like...
There's a still of them, yeah.
And I cleaned them up, but, you know, they're, they're stained at times.
But I think it'll, it'll come to a nice, we did the team to walk through yesterday. We've got the air hockey table on there, ordered the air hockey kind of box. We're looking for more donations, we need, we found a second TV, is that the TV, do you want me? There's an LG TV.
Yeah, that's cool, yeah.
Yeah, so we want to mount both of those TVs on the wall. We want to get some gaming consoles, like Xboxes. And get maybe like six or seven, like, B bag chairs to go around, because we need to still make sure the room works for these years. So, we don't want, like, furniture that's like a couch, right, down. When you push the cables back, just throw some B bag chairs, and...
I try to encourage them to come here as many times as I can, but they feel like that, pushing them out of their home.
Yeah, we don't want to push them out, we just want to make sure that the kids, it's the building that's supposed to be for the kids, so we want to make sure the kids still can use it.
We got to figure out a way to, to monitor it, though.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I, just, we need to figure out a way to monitor that people aren't wandering over from the various establishments next door.
Yeah, bad things can happen.
Yeah, and then, I don't know, we did the lock off that enters the gym from before, or it no longer matches. I don't know if we did that because we had open two things, but we really need to look at the locks. For a while, the, the door wasn't locking, but I, I looked at it, and it seems to be working.
But I think, ideally, we want to lock the pad, that the police can unlock, we got locked properly, right? And so, we know if it's open in time, kids have to school from like four to six or something, to be open.
I think we can consider investing in it, I mean, it's common ways, right?
And I want to be a spoke start, we're not just going to like crazy use, you know, the shorty people, using our pickleball people, so crazy. But, you know, just get some activity going on there, just get it open. Say, "Hey, this is a place where the kids want to participate, if you want something here, you know, we can..."
Roll that, we need to be happy. Your event, and a lot of kids show up, that would be good advertising.
Yeah, I need the Edness platform up running for that, because that's going to be the piece, so you collect the data, lots of information, lots of families, and emailing people and letting them know. So, I, I need to kind of get that up and running. But it would be great if you probably were paid to, to use, um, the ceiling in there is...
The ceiling is in the carpet, we cleaned, sure, we cleaned, but it's...
Kids are right there, yeah.
All right, let's chip away, let's, let's...
Right.
I think that building has come a long way, and I think it's a great asset, the pickleball thing is good, I think the youth center is great, and stuff in there is great. Thing I worry about is on the chaperone problems. And what is our accountability for that, we provided a facility, if somebody gets hurt, something happens, drinking is in there, and there's no way we can control that, we're not going to have a chaperone. So, have we thought about how we protect them and us?
I think if you want to volunteer, I would just be there.
But even, even so, there's a, you know, I think about all the kind of things, I mean, great things that will and would happen there, I think it's a great concept. I just wonder if there's another layer that we could somehow add to protect those using it, and also to protect the town from, from...
Well, I've got waivers, but I don't think you have them.
For kids?
Yeah.
They're, well, not...
Parents, the parents.
The parents, you can have parents release their plans, minors can't release their plans.
No, right, the parents.
You still have the minor's plan.
Of all the things where we need a resource, right, we've got the bathroom, we've got the Rack Center, there's, you know, we need to lose the view of where do we need and how should it be staffed? Because it needs an attendant, I mean, if you make it open to the public, it's going to get abused. We know we put in that foot washer, we, you know, that's what we was concerned with, how long before it's abused. But a couple of people while we were building it said, "Oh, that won't last." It wasn't going to stop the good nation, right? "I'm going to do it, and we're going to observe it, it's sort of a test, right, and we'll see how it goes."
Yeah, we, I mean, we made as ample groups as we could, but, I mean, if, if somebody destroys that, nobody's hurt. What I'm worried about is somebody, and I'm not, I'm not even worried about the liability, which we should be worried about. I'm worried about the kids, the implications to the town, you know, bad press, if something happens, and the odds on none of this is going to happen. But I just worry that if it's used, and then ultimately, on one particular reason, it's used, and we didn't think about that, that we started first.
Yeah, so, but listen, the other one that came up was the library, that's what we wanted to mention. We have a problem with the staffing of the library, and we came down with two.
Well, we, it just came to my attention that the salaries, the salary numbers are extremely high, and we don't have enough money budgeted for salary, we just...
Is that a new revelation?
Relatively, yeah.
How'd that happen?
Um, I, I guess the library, they wanted two people there because they didn't feel safe with just one person over there. They wanted, they wanted two people in there, and the payroll got carried away.
With somebody, and I'm not faulting anyone, somehow they got a thumbs up to do it.
We did last year.
And we didn't...
Well, they, they asked for it, I think.
I mean, if we approved two people, we should have, we didn't move that across.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, it was during the budget process. And, and I think that, I don't remember the specific conversation about the individual person, or if, if there was a conversation about it, that it was something of alarm, either from your cell or from Mike, you know, what, what, what the conversation was. But, but just make sure I'm here, you know what I'm saying? There, now we have a new shit payroll, so then there's a, there's a... There, now we have additional payroll, so then there's a, there's a concern of. We're gonna have to transfer funds in there if it continues the way it is.
Are they, so they're overruled, but?
No, not yet. But but they're throwing paces, they're running over.
You're the way to consider lesser hours, but to staff or something.
We put in the alarm system for a couple of months ago. Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if you can fix the problem here, somebody's gotta take a look at it and make a recommendation.
I I I.
I do that.
Well, I just, I I was told that the people weren't approved before I came on, so.
Yeah, that may be true.
I think it worked.
I mean, if they were approved and we didn't budget for it, shame on us.
Right.
And if you're both running the budget, and we're re-approved, we gotta fix it.
So that that's, I mean, the budget was proof. So we need to be there, though, I think that's the the that's a threshold.
Do you need, do people know, or do they feel like they need to do yes, so it becomes solid on that?
Yeah.
If we plus their hours, then we're.
Yeah, I mean, the problem, if we try to solve it here, we're gonna get exactly wrong.
Hey.
Let's have somebody lead it and recommend us.
Oh, yeah, we'll call, you know, Heather, when he's with Jay. And uh and and we'll we'll try to get our arms.
Right, yeah, if you can. Heather, when we have that conversation, if you can let me know, it's it's gonna be considered, that's all right.
And there was probably just a disconnect between what was asked for.
Yeah.
And we thought it was a good idea and would ended up in the in the budget.
I just wondered, you were feeling about the rec center, I need supervision there. Cause uh, context background, people about kids, a lot of them come from Wisconsin. And all the bridge is on the side streets, but the rec center is open when it comes to the setup. These kids are under all that and uh. And I'm just trying to know what's happening on some of these such things, they they don't care, they don't come to the area, they decide to go to dine. Et cetera, you could have a serious problem in the rec center with an accident, they're being hurt, you know, or. Actually, you know, it's insane, it's that, they have little fistfights to some of them, these school kids and that group of kids. But I think supervision would be.
Good point. Um, oh, we have a place on um ten fourteen, now um Chad, she did a Don, the Jackie, because we have the guys from the barn house, we wanna cook some food for there.
What?
Ten fourteen, maybe from like one to four.
What's going on?
That's the open house, ribbon cutting, so we'll have ribbon cutting, a bit of rec center being open, a tour, basically people can go through, look at the gym. Also think about renting it for parties, do the game room. Then we'll have a tent in the Mulharen lot, where we'll have a couple of like little bathroom houses, baby houses, and hopefully some hot dogs and burgers, just around. Just so, yeah, people just know it's here and it's open.
What time?
One to four. And so we'll look to send out postcards to every single home, um, two, three, we'll, we'll, we'll work, closer to that. And also maybe help like sign up, so hopefully what they can do is they can sign up into the Edmonds platform, hopefully they can kind of see what's available. So also those library activities, we go through the tech sheet, anything that's happening in the center will be on the Edmonds platform. Lockers, um, beach badges, everything can be kind of bought for room renovations, everything through that platform. Then we also have the library ball festival, which is kinda have, that is ten twenty-one, that'll be Edmonds side. Um, our application center to the game edition, so that for kind of the first day, so it's gonna be like that, I see. Um, we have plenty of time for that in. We talked about the town kind of paint tackling, aligning with the National Beach last night, twenty-one. Halloween, carpentry, um, one of the Saturday, Tuesday, ten twenty, so the ocean port is during Sunday, ten twenty-nine. We talked about wanting to do online cafes in our center, we just don't have enough bodies to kind of hold the turnout for this year. But um, so we wanna definitely do that for next year. But one of the things we're thinking of is maybe doing a drive-in movie on Halloween night, against the pattern. And maybe using focus focus, having a movie kind of play, so it could be just kind of a fun little town. So we're working on figuring out, we may not have it, but we just don't have the volunteers staff.
Do you think the uh the uh drive-in movie thing is likely to be a go?
I would say so.
Do we have that? Would we have to, do we have the right thing that will, the section of white?
Maybe it's. John's talking to Andy about it.
Oh, okay, good. Um, do we have the rights to people, I guess, it's the only thing that looks nice on the movie.
It is. If you put gray, the movie wouldn't show.
Have it's painted or?
Had it before they went uh into their problems. Um, I'm trying to think of how we can do it, I, we could probably hang something?
Yes. I'd like.
I got I got thirty of those.
Oh. Thirty feet?
Yeah.
Wow.
Um.
Plus.
You know, when they did it in in the wall, they they got a couple of containers, you know, the the containers, and they just stacked like three. And that that, then they painted it, and it was really easy.
You mean like a white trucking pool?
Yeah, uh, what did you see on ships? Three containers went on top of it, and they just painted the side, and that was the.
I can tell if that's something you really want, that someone that owns doing the movie, right? No?
It's either a big sheet or white paint. Make it easy.
If we're only doing one, if we're only doing.
It's very old, so if you want to do, if you want to do five minutes of number five, but.
If you actually think that this movie thing is gonna.
Yeah, we're gonna try, we're gonna try, we're gonna try, and then, you know.
I were, I just thought of the ice skating.
Yeah, 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 I would love to do that. So there's so much things to have, we're starting to like pull back on. But I think an ice skating rink would be great for like jamming for a time.
Just like heroes.
Exactly, and again, these are self-funded, right? Like, we're gonna put money down to kind of start it up, but people coming in for rentals. Yeah, the whole thing works.
Brian last year got the prices or same, somebody got the prices on that.
Oh, you did?
Is this a cryogenic cooled ice cream?
No, it's a plastic.
It's not water.
It's plastic.
Oh, it's plastic, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's no water lava, no water lava.
No water, it's just a sheet. Can you skate on that shirt there?
A hard question.
Can you poop on that shirt? Dogs, I'm worried about. Dogs love this word, man. Uh, okay, so that's Halloween, so just don't have, might have to be amazing, but we don't have.
We're ready.
Do a rice, great, we just draw. Uh, and then the farmer's market, um, would be great, thank you again for letting us come. Grab a lot, everyone's very happy about that. So we're keeping that going, again, once it gets to the whole time of year, we'll go into the um, the rec center. And I think we're also gonna look to do two to seven next year, so we're gonna look to get the time later in there. Um, make sure more people appreciate it. And then going into next year, um, I've got, I've sent numbers over to Dendals, one of my work on numbers. They, well, we'll get a sponsor, music, music on each next year. So it would be from after the Fourth of July all the way through maybe the first week in September. You know, that's the nice time to have music on each. So that's kind of the update on some of the events.
And the caution.
And yeah, the caution for sure.
So many, and they're gonna be here, he said, we bring it in the what? It'll be here at six AM, get it started. It's the day of.
He's probably set this. So. John, we're rushing to start calling stuff off, late, late, Friday, and throw lots off. So I'm gonna put it some out today, tonight, and it's all on. All the signs out there.
Okay, that's the update on that.
Excellent. Next two, I could go quickly with uh codification costs, Chris and I were talking about it. We just wanna keep our eye on the ball. When when we add a ordinance or we modify an ordinance, it's just not that one thing that's modified. The code, the code publishers, they, it changes sections, pages, and everything else, and the cost adds up. It's not just, oh, well, let's add a a one line in there, it sometimes could be thousand dollars.
Recently kind of built up a a group of families from San Antonio, because it's expensive. The one we listed is a couple of five thousand dollars.
This is both modifications existing with all those new?
Yeah, it changes a lot of things that you can think about. All the sections change, they may have to reference it in another section. It's not a, just a change of line in this uh this ordinance, so yeah, the, which one was five thousand?
Well, that had a quality of five G, but twenty-five to four G, we want, I don't know where that is, but um.
Just, that's just a point of information that, you know, kind of opened my eyes too, when Chris said, you know, with with the cost laws, I mean.
Ordinances are expensive.
Yeah, they are.
And I was like.
Do you want to have like two publishing years or?
Like, kind of what we do, yeah. Or you can send them to general code, and most people use the online code now anyway.
Yeah.
Under new laws, it'll just stand, then it won't be.
In the code.
It'll be categorized.
Yeah, it'll be categorized, it'll be counted.
And uh, it's 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 easier now than it was when we had the hard copies, where they, every.
Well, it's still.
Well, we have, we have a certain amount of hard copies here, but. You have to have someone to look at. I don't wanna bully her, just uh, wanted everybody to know that it costs me when we're when we're doing these things. Auction of vehicles and equipment, no longer needed, we're putting together our own inventory, we should be ready to set an auction date.
Well, we don't have a lot of auction.
Oh, I, we have a, we have a a a good idea. All right, he's a buyer.
We're bringing pictures, yes, guys.
Okay, yeah.
She's got some stuff, we'll give her some more stuff, we'll get all squared by.
And we, the quad's over in the art, a description then.
Okay.
So that she can, she, Chris can publish.
Okay.
Joe, is this consistent with what came out of recommendations that can be with this?
It is. The number is, absolutely. Um, and uh, you know, we we keep trying one in, one out, you know, and uh. And it could bump down to somebody else's, but something goes out at the end of the, at the end of the system. Uh, we don't wanna add to the system. I mean, if it's, if it goes over to the beach and then beach's truck goes out, that serves a purpose as well. If they get a better one, then whatever, so yes, is the answer. And shoot, Burger, you're right.
Yep, a little, okay, now, before I do that, Steve, you mentioned that Jim was gonna talk about the electric bike direct.
Yeah, he can do it real fast. It's like something else, if Jim wants to go, do it real fast, he did the whole ordinance. Uh, we just gotta take a look at, you guys all wanna take a look at, I think, see what's over, but also, we also wanna add the fines, what do you think is a reasonable fine?
Okay, so just just a question, so I know you built it on something Jim already existed, right?
Correct.
You've tailored it for Seabright.
I have.
What you have there, you'd be comfortable with for us to review.
Absolutely, absolutely.
One question.
Sure.
There's so much in the news about lithium batteries and in households, and burning down houses. Is there anything that we've contemplated about lithium regulations around this?
No, I didn't get into that, it's just used bikes, it's all of this, that's all that we'll had. I tailored that part of it to Seabright, and I added a section for the low speed vehicles to have problems with. Primarily about the trash and bringing it to Seabright, I didn't get into the batteries, that's something we can add, I'll discuss.
Yeah, I mean, that's tough, right, cause it's private property, when people do my private property, is there discretion?
I guess a big deal, we storage of the batteries, correct, and then we're to charge, and where where we can do that, I don't know, where, you know, people can go to the garage.
Not to believe this, we had lithium battery fires in many houses and structures.
With Seabright proper?
Yeah.
Okay. Bye, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, but just real quick, it's the um, it's walls ordinance, it's tailored to us, it's definitely what I should talk about. Just goes over reuse, where you can't use it, where you can use it, so if I can, if I wanna take a glance at really quick, I can, you know, there are money, it's very much right. So I think that's pretty much all I have, so.
Thank you, question.
Sure. There's a question on it, there's a uh, how much power that then you can put out, it's also all in there, defines what your vehicles are, where you can have them. Uh, for the e-bikes, pretty much, uh, we're limiting, it goes by the state statute, the state actually follows what it. Three categories, and and it goes where you can't have, where you can't have, and one place where we did allow them, because if you wanted it, and I agree. Wall push and avenue is on the monthly splash pad, as they call it, on the North Beach. Uh, and as far as low speed vehicles go, it pretty much just dance on Seabright, cause really no one would operate them.
What did you decide to do on this last night?
Allow the vehicles on there.
Pedaling or with the electric use?
I just put it that they're allowed on there, uh, we can put in there, if we want to restrict how they're reused on 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 this splash pad, that's easily added. Like I said, it's in a roster, actually, I'm gonna kind of look at it, write down what you think should be added to it or taken out of it, and then we can kind of hold it in there.
Okay, just kind of following the process that I like to do on ordinances, would you send, Chris?
Sure.
The the administration committee will look at, they'll review ordinances, just make a recommendation to the council. So we'll try and put it all in one place, so you're not taking time to set it.
Sure, okay.
Sorry, Ken.
No, just on the use for the, on the splash pad, I'm concerned because there are now over sixty stairwells coming up in all those schools. And you have people walking up and down, carrying stuff, et cetera, baby carriages, and whatnot. Uh, there has to be some speed restrictions, because I mean, I see these guys flying.
Yes.
And then when the splash pad ends, they're into beach club parking lots, and then they continue on the Seabright there, and so.
Yeah, that's an issue with beyond e-bikes with that, that's part of the terminus, but it's in there. And we can put in, it's due in different areas, it's not a problem, but it's in there, they define obvious vehicles can go, so. And regarding the splash pad, we often leave to put that in there, that these e-bikes are allowed on there, just because of how hazardous ocean happens. The beach is very narrow, uh, shoulder, and it's it's hard up, and just, it's in their psychosystem, with these kids. And you read through it, there's a part there, about forty-year-olds being able to operate on sidewalks, and it's it's a pretty good ordinance, we can add it there, so. Even though Chris looked at it and then made a change in stuff.
One thing we did out there too, was if you, are you adding back or not? You always see someone coming up the ramp off of the Seaboard, those electric bikes stop off the Seaboard.
Yes, and this is there, it's one that they add along, so that was the no doubt.
So, you know, like we talked about with the fire, that they, one of the things that's good about ordinance is it puts you in a position, you have something you're pointing to, you're forcing to respect. Then if I take Joe's comment, careful what you order, so it costs money to do it. Do you guys feel this is worthwhile?
I think it is, I know we're gonna have that one accident, we're gonna have that one person hit another person, and we all, we wanna be able to wipe somebody for something. We wanna be able to have something, a little bit of team, if you see some, you know, two two kids, middle ocean, and straight down the old line. We've seen it before, you can hit them with thorns, it'd be nice to have. And we're also seeing a lot of the golf carts coming into Seabright now.
We're gonna want to sell it, but that's a no-go, we are, we know we're gonna get someone hit on ocean, I would look at a golf cart, that's just a matter of time.
You know, just to say a word on that, common knowledge, Jim and Brett tried enough to explain to me that golf carts and all speed vehicles are not allowed in the town. Because we have a state highway that runs through the middle of the town. Say, why can you do it on the beach? Because on the beach has a lot of houses west, and all they're doing is crossing the shore and you get to the beach, but they're not driving on ocean. In this town, you pretty much have to drive on ocean to go anywhere. One of my neighbors, boy golf cart, was delivered to his house the other day. I said, Peter, I don't know if you know this, but they're illegal in town, and he was like, what? They went back on the truck and went back, right? He said, thank you for telling me, but it's interesting, if we see these, these are illegal in town from our perspective.
Even if they're registered?
Currently, they're legal in town if you're operating on the side streets.
Side streets only.
So if you go and not trail with the light all day long. But that's, it's like this ordinance, the way it's turned right now, we'll actually remove that as well, just to not be invisible, Seabright at all.
So to John's question, is somebody registered?
I I saw someone get pulled over, get a golf cart on the beach, didn't have it, but then I noticed there was a guy that lives back by the other supermarket, he has a license plate. Does that make you illegal or?
These vehicles, the best way to educate yourself about these low speed vehicles is just Google low speed vehicle, and Jersey DMV has great site that spells out everything. They are treated exactly like any other road vehicle, as far as like a car, motorcycle, you need an plate, registration, insurance, all of it. There's some specific things that are unique to these low speed vehicles, that are different motors than than your traditional car, but with that said, you need all this stuff. License, registration, so if you see somebody driving on these go-karts, gonna play on it, that's illegal. They have that gas, that they have that license plate, it's not gonna give you all details, but spell that out exactly.
But you just can't be on the state highway.
You 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 can, if it's, you have, you can, if it's special permission and it's twenty-five miles per hour below. You can go up to thirty, but it's only special permission. So technically, if DOT and and Mayor Council decided to agree upon having low speed vehicles operate just in a situation at a thirty miles per hour, you probably could do it with DOT's permission. But I don't advocate it, I think they're hazard, and I think. and I think, oh, it's, it's an athletic requirement, we can just remove it now, clearly.
And I, I know this is a neat, like, discussion, we're talking about golf carts, but in, in the ordinance, does it talk about any aftermarket, uh, batteries? That's, that's something I'm on now, that...
No, again, that's just a walls ordinance, and I just looked at it from a use point of view, or one...
The kids are buying these juiced up lithium batteries online, so they're going faster. They're not, they're, there's no slow, whatever.
I guess the only way you can deal with that is steam restriction.
Is it the speed restriction, you're trying to have a power restriction, which is in there.
The power restriction is in there as well?
It's seventy-five yards up to.
But some, I don't know, that, that, how do you know?
Call law.
Yeah, so...
No, no, I mean, how do you, I've never even, you gotta take a plate of parts of the batteries.
I don't think it's specifically one of what the ordinance is going to design, if the, the ordinance is going to design to, the envelopes are writing somebody, you can take it if they're operating the e-bike in a reckless manner, and it's also to make sure that if we do see a golf cart come over, then we should have it, we can stop them and write that, so we can put up the fine limit. It's not, we have no way of looking at batteries to see if it's how we...
Okay, I was just wondering how that did that, so, it's a reading warrant.
Do they get like a reckless, rather than, like, a...
They're subjecting.
On e-bike, like, in e-bikes, and... No, we would give them the ord, we would write them the ordinance for improper use or reckless activity by under our laws, and we would collect the fines, but what the fines would be is what we decide what we want the fines to be.
How long?
Chief, what, what happens if it's a mine?
Day, you get the day.
Same way?
Same way. Sure. They're also subject to filtering on state statutes, anything inside, if you have a new ordinance, if they violate, they can break the, the state statute as well.
You said we can make illegal golf carts instead of Seabright?
Right now, they're looking to, you can, the only place you can drive golf carts, let's just say, through a center street, drive over Ocean Avenue, back down the center street, and on the, on the east side, that's pretty much it. And technically, on our parking lots, the ordinance says we can do that either, so essentially, you ban Seabright entirely, which I think, I personally, and I don't actually understand why they ask you this way to go.
You said, the, the plan versus, could we also make e-bikes illegal?
Uh, I don't know about that. You know, I don't, it's a, it's a little...
I don't know. I mean, we want to do that, we want to make e-bikes illegal, because everybody, I mean, we have the police department.
Yeah, we have it.
Yeah, um, we're going to sit down in the presses, I just want to know what options are, I didn't know you could make, uh, golf carts illegal, if you have a state license for it, and you still make them...
They're not golf carts, there's, there's a separation here, so low speed vehicles are built, they're like the golf carts, they have the requirements, so they're, they're a vehicle that's tailing, you can operate on highways, on roads, that doesn't, we see rest of time, as much as we're, but the personal charge and power are a little bit up.
And we can still make them illegal?
Absolutely.
That's why I was wondering about e-bikes, is that...
Yeah, it's different.
What could be restricted to certain errors in e-bikes?
Well, you, you, I mean, the banning, the partial banning of e-bikes is concerned in terms of a challenge has to, um, you know, every, every ordinance has to be not arbitrary or reasonable. Could someone challenge the ordinance, make an argument that you're banning e-bikes, but you're not banning bikes? Why can't you regulate e-bikes so they work more like bikes? They're slower, they're, you know, doing the things that bikes are. Okay, excellent.
And we do get, you know, just thinking the fines you might want, and maybe for kids on the e-bike, you don't want him, but, you know, I don't know a lot, I don't know what you're thinking, maybe for a golf cart, you know, if they can afford a golf cart, they can probably afford higher fines, so just think about something you might want to have in it, that's something that you, you guys can discuss.
Do e-bikes still require to have any sort of identification on by itself, or a plate?
No.
The problem is sometimes people call, have gotten this call, saying, take a look at one of these guys, but how do I even call you to identify?
It's too late, but I'm going to probably get triggered on.
That's the problem, unfortunately.
That's your record.
Record is the tracker.
Yeah. Okay, moving on, talking about the Anchorage train station facility. Good progress here, it's a tracker, pretty much the plan. Bit package was released a couple of weeks ago, uh, thanks to Colliers and Blue White for that. Uh, twelve companies asked for the bit package, which was good to see. Paul's is doing eleven o'clock today.
They do a ten, and we got one.
Oh, who's doing ten?
I just texted it to you.
Oh, okay.
Some...
Okay, so if we get an acceptable complaint, if, if we can, the plan is that we would bring to the Mayor and Council a request for resolution to the order. We would do that, and the anticipated delivery date is, uh, six weeks, which we put it into November. The thought is, if that in fact happens, we will take the delivery of the kit, and we will look for volunteers, and we'll put that together. It's designed to be put together by volunteers. A couple of us have some construction background, so if this all comes into place, November timeframe, we were going to put the train pavilion up in Anchorage. If you remember, that whole park, that two of the parts of it, and a lot of this is funded by the county, uh, planned things in irrigation, we're holding off on those aspects of the project until the bridge is completed, because the bridge is going to affect the southern part of that whole park. So once that's completed, we would proceed with doing the remainder of the work. The hope is that we're going to get start the pavilion, construction in November, and have it ready to go, uh, finishing. And that's that.
We do have several items for close.
Did you bring anything else on the agenda?
Yes.
I have just a little bit, and a little bit.